Seven o'clock.
I'm waiting for the signal. Okay. I'd like to open this Alderman meeting of the City of Warrenton at this time. I have a little housekeeping to do first. Item seventeen D will be removed from the agenda.
D or D?
D.
Okay.
Could we all rise and put a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could the Explorer Group of Post nine one 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 come forward? I'm pleased to present this check to you of three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents to the Warrenton Police Explorer Post of nine one one one. The proceeds, the check is from the proceeds you guys collected from the recycling day of the metal that we received on October eleventh. I'd like to thank you as Explorer Groups for all the work you did. I'd like to thank the staff, Aldermen, and everybody in the city who participated in it. So, thank you very much for everything you've done.
You were the structure of all those moves.
I helped put it together.
You put what the fellow partners done?
Glad it worked out.
Took a picture.
Glad we had a lot of acceleration and hopefully we get to do it again next year.
Sounds good.
And if you'll climb real quick, we'll put the adults in the back and you guys in the front too.
Have any of the adults or shorted handkerchiefs?
Yeah.
I mean, I would never say that.
Can you put that check up?
There you go.
Can you bring the check up right there in the middle? There we go. Here we go, one, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Here, hold on, hold on.
I didn't really brush your toes.
You broke it. No, back row. Here we go, one, two, three.
Okay. I'd like to go down to item number four, approval of the minutes for a regular board meetings for October seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Make a motion, we approve the regular board meeting minutes from October seventh, two thousand fourteen.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second to approve the board meetings of October seventh of two thousand fourteen. Roll call vote.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes. Looking for approval of executive session minutes from October seventh, two thousand fourteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for October seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Motion's been made, made in second to approve the executive minutes from October seventh, two thousand fourteen. Roll call vote.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Item five, hearing from the public. At this time, we let anybody from the public that would like to speak, they have five minutes. Is there anybody from the public? Not hearing any, same courtesy goes to the Board of Aldermen. Would you want to start down at Alderman Ock?
No comments.
No comments.
No comment?
I'd just like to thank some of the staff that was definitely out there. It was a little chilly that, that day doing the recycling, but it was a great turnout. I loved seeing how many people actually showed up. I was skeptical there for a little bit, but it really turned out good. Jack did a good job organizing a lot of that stuff and so did the rest of the staff, but thank you guys.
Jim, anything? I don't, I don't have anything. Item, item eight, fireworks discussion?
Seven.
Seven? Okay, seven. Message, oh, message from the mayor. Sorry.
You were gonna pass me right by.
We weren't gonna let him.
He told me earlier he planned to do that.
That he was gonna pass me by.
I was afraid.
Good evening, Board and City residents. I'm the proud wife of Jerry Dyer and I'm here to share a letter from him. October twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, to the residents of Warrenton and the entire city staff. After careful consideration, it is with deep regret that I resign as Mayor of Warrenton effective immediately. This has been an extremely difficult decision, but I feel I'm not able to carry on my duties as I battle cancer for the third time. The past two and a half years as your mayor has been exciting, challenging, and I believe very productive. The city has come a long way in the past couple of years. I believe the residents have a new sense of confidence in city government. My commitment to them to have honest, fair, and ethical government has been achieved. We have a renewed sense of cooperation with the county as old wounds have been healed and issues have been forgiven. We are moving forward with a number of important projects to better our community. I would like to send a personal thank you to each and every city staffer and employee for making my transition to mayor an easy one. When I took office, the cooperation and support of city staff was outstanding. Their dedication to their jobs and commitments to the residents of Warrenton are truly commendable. I apologize to John Clark and the rest of the Board for leaving you like this, but I know you and the city are in very good hands. My wife Cheryl and I would like to thank the scores of friends and family for their thoughts and prayers during this time. I wish the City of Warrenton and its residents the best as we continue to move forward. Sincerely, Jerry Dyer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for, for that. His thought, our thought, our thoughts and prayers will be with you.
Hey, Mike, Mike, grab their coat.
Okay, let's move on to item eight, discussion, fireworks discussion. Mike, would you like to say something about the fireworks?
I hate to follow that up.
I know.
Something trivial as fireworks display, but I just. From our Tourism Commission meeting of September thirtieth, we discussed again the fireworks. We wanted to get started on it a little earlier this year to make sure we knew where, where we were, what we wanted to do and what the Fair Board was looking forward to doing. So, I, and I contacted Paul Owenby and asked him what was going on with the Fair. They had a good year with the Fair in spite of some of the things that happened. But they hadn't met yet to really decide, you know, moving forward next year, if they were still gonna be able to contribute to fireworks display or anything like that. That being said, the Commission decided we would, as a city, we should go ahead and move forward and go ahead and commit to fireworks display again next year. We think it worked out pretty well. The, about the only, probably, I don't know if you wanna call it criticism, feedback. Some of the feedback I heard was, you know, well, it was a little short and da-da-da and all this. So, we looked at first, again, staying with the ten thousand dollars that we gave last year or that we committed last year and seeing if the Fair would, could contribute. But we didn't wanna wait and lose the opportunity because, of course, July fourth is on the weekend again and we need to lock in a fireworks company. So, that being said, the Commission decided that we would commit to fifteen thousand dollars for fireworks display and not worry about the Fair. We would go ahead and not take it out of our budget. We had budgeted ten thousand dollars, but we have a contingency fund of roughly ninety-eight thousand dollars, so we feel we could take another five thousand out of that for fireworks display. And I think it's something that the city needs to continue to do. It does bring, you know, some activity along with the Fair Board, with the Fair itself.
Do we need to make a motion on it then tonight? Is that what we're looking to do?
I think you would need to, yes, so we can.
Yes, you all need to approve our.
Recommendation. 'Cause I didn't see the note here.
Expenditure of it.
I didn't see it on the agenda to, to make the motion, but this is where we'll do it? All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the Tourism Board's recommendation of fifteen thousand dollars for fireworks for the Fair.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, made in second to approve the fifteen thousand dollars for the fireworks paid out of Tourism. Is there any discussion?
You didn't get to make us whole pitch.
What's that?
Do you wanna pitch more?
You need to get to make your whole pitch.
No, I.
I think you were gonna try to struggle to convince.
No, I was, I'm open to questions or anything like that.
We've grilled you so many times.
I, you know, we are, and, and I wanna thank the Tourism Commission that I work with and particularly Melody and Terry. It makes it a little easier to work. We know, you know, when we find out what funds we have available. And we are trying wholeheartedly to bring things to the, to the Board that we hope will increase, increase tourism in the city. You know, we've gotten, we've had kind of a malaise here lately since we lost Catch the Glow and we're looking for things to kinda revive activity in the city. You know, even Wright City has Strauss and Bash and that's a pretty big deal, you know. Jonesburg has a couple of things. So, we feel like we need to recommit ourselves to get things moving. And again, all this money comes from our hotel tax, so it's not directly a, you know, tax paid for by the citizens, but we feel like we need to be very, very good caretakers of that tax money. And so, that's why we look carefully at what we try to do and everything. And I applaud you guys for also doing the same thing, you know, with our, with our tax dollars and everything, so. Any other questions or comments or anything on it?
Any other?
You want us to grill you?
Okay, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Thank you, I'll take.
Motion passed, six to zero.
We have a Tourism Committee next Tuesday, Commission meeting next Tuesday, if anybody's.
In the morning.
Eight o'clock in the morning.
Take them to eight P.M.
Join us, but I will pass along. Thank you.
I'd love to come to those sometimes if we could move on to the.
Let's move, let's move on.
See, you should've cut off.
Item nine, proclamation and Paint the Town Orange Week for Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Burnth. I'm the Executive Director at Agapi Ministry of Warren County. Forgive my voice, I'm currently getting over bronchitis, so I apologize. Agapi is an organization that has been in Warren County for eighteen years. Our mission is to help the hungry, hurting, and homeless of Warren County. I'm here tonight to ask for the city's support for Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, which is November fifteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen. This nationwide awareness week is intended to draw attention to the cause of hunger and the issue of hunger and homelessness. Hunger is a real issue here in Warren County and that's why our organization exists. One out of every four Warren County residents is food insecure, which means that they're not sure where their next meal is coming from. Agapi operates two food pantries, one here in Warrenton and one in Wright City. Through those two food pantries, we feed over twelve hundred people each month, fifty percent of which are children. So, we're asking for the city's support for two things for this week. The first is for our proclamation to officially proclaim it Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Warrenton. And the second is support for our Turn the Town Orange Initiative through the hanging of orange banners on the city's streetlights. So, I appreciate your consideration of those two requests. If you'll indulge me just one more second, I'd, I'd like to leave you with just a couple of comments from some of our clients. We've asked our clients over, in preparation for this week, to write down what Agapi means to them on plates. And so, I've brought just a couple of them. The first one says, "I'm a single mom of two and making minimum wage. It's impossible for me to provide everything my family needs. I am grateful for all the help that we are given." The second one says, "I make sure my kids eat even when I don't. I wish we always had enough of everything that we need." The third says, "My husband and I have worked all of our lives and been just fine. We are now medically retired and on a very limited income and have no way to work physically. Agapi has rescued us from the despair that we have felt." And the last one says, "I'm never without food as long as I have Agapi." So, we appreciate your consideration of those two requests. Thank you. Are there any questions? Of course, I'm happy to take those, sorry.
So, I think on your petition request, you asked that the city would hang the banner, the ribbons, and the Agapi would provide them. Do we have an issue with the city hanging those?
We have typically not.
Okay.
But that's certainly up to all of you to make that decision.
Well, the upside to having the city do it is we know they're gonna be hung properly so that the poles aren't damaged. The downside is it takes top time.
Right.
I mean, that's the trade-off. 'Cause I'm sure you could find volunteers, I suspect I'll be one of them, who'll go around hanging banner or hanging the stuff, but I know there's an issue on how they're attached to the pole. You have a feeling anyway, Mike?
How many, what, are you doing all the white poles on forty-seven and Main Street?
Hopefully, if that's possible.
And what were, what were you, just the rip?
The plastic ribbons, right. It's like a, it's like a tablecloth?
Yeah.
Wrapped.
So, not really, more ribbons than banners?
Right, it's not a banner really, it's a ribbon.
Kinda like the purple.
But it's not just a bow. You're doing the spiral.
Like a barber pole?
So, that's a little bit more work.
Even barber pole holding around? Is that, is that a problem, Brad, with doing it that way? We've been doing like a bow.
I mean, if we do a bow, that's not so bad, but if we're wrapping them, it's like doing the lights, it's, it's pretty.
Could we just do bows, use the same material like they did for the purple?
Sure. Absolutely, we're open to whatever is workable.
We can do the bows, I, we can do those. I mean, that's, we'll, we'll do it.
Absolutely.
So, what is it?
Contact, that Michelle gets ahold of them?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before we do this, and I'm not opposed to it, what are we gonna do when Relay for Life comes back and wants us to do this in May, 'cause we're gonna start a precedent?
They'll have to come to the Board.
I think it's a great precedent, to be honest with you. I mean, we try to promote the town, whatever causes are important in the community, and it adds to the community. I don't see a distraction side myself.
No, I think she was questioning about putting the hose on.
Well, again, if the question is, if we put them on, we won't, we know we won't damage the poles. If somebody else does, we don't know that. And if it's not a big issue, we could, I mean, I think we could live with it either way, right?
Of course, we're happy to do it whichever way is preferable.
The only reason I brought it up, 'cause it was listed in the request.
I saw it.
That, that the city would put them up and provide, that they would provide and the city would put them up.
Any more? Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proclamation, Paint the Town Orange, the Orange Week for Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week of November fifteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Motion's been made first and second. Could you read that motion back to us?
To approve signing of a proclamation for Hunger and Homeless Week and to paint the town orange November fifteenth to the twenty-second.
Roll call vote.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
I, I don't know if you noticed on the bottom of the sheet, I don't know if you wanna talk about this, Michelle, but there's a number of things that is being done during the week. I know several of the board members have gone to various restaurants where the, the restaurants will be participating and giving a percentage back of everything that's sold. There's a dine-out, there's a special movie.
Sure.
At the Wesleyan Church where if you bring five cans of food, then you could go into the movie and I guess it's a first-run type movie. I'm not a busy person, so.
Oh, well, if you'd like to come in costume and do a performance of Let It Go, then come join us on Tuesday of that week at the Warrenton Wesleyan Church. We will be showing the Frozen Sing-Along, which is very exciting. It is five food items of admission per family to come and see the movie. We'll have snacks. On Wednesday, we'll be having an open house at Agapi's food pantry. We invite everyone from the community to come and see how we raise food, how we store it, how we distribute it. We'll also be doing a photo gallery display there done by local photographers that depict real-life hunger and homelessness in and around Warren County. It's called Food for Thought. That'll be on display there as well. And then on Thursday of that week will be the dine-out night. And we're working still to secure a number of restaurants, but we already have several, who will be donating back a portion of their proceeds that evening to Agapi in support of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Thank you for that.
You're good. Six to zero.
Six to zero.
Passed.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for reminding me. Item number ten, approval of destruction of records.
You have the list in front of you, the following records to be destroyed.
I was a little surprised at how new a couple of them were. And like, maybe there's not an issue, but like, what was it? Applicants for people not hired dated two thousand twelve. Would there be a reason we need to keep those around if somebody were to come back and say, "Well, I was discriminated against in the hiring process"? We have no records to support that? Or is there a timeframe on it? I, to me, it's kind of a legal question in some ways.
I have to apologize to you, Alderman Ock. I can't, I can barely hear out of my left ear and my right ear is completely blocked, so can you repeat it? 'Cause I didn't catch the whole question.
Well, my only concern, well, the question was relative to the disposal of applicants' records who weren't hired. And the date on it is two thousand twelve. My thought was from a legal perspective, do we have to be concerned that if we destroy records and somebody were to come back, 'cause it's only been two years or less than two years, and say, "Hey, I was discriminated or wasn't given due consideration and now our documentation's gone"? Is that an issue?
The, I, I don't think it would be. And the reason I say that is because, for two reasons. Number one, a claim with the Missouri Commission on Human Rights, if it's still the same, is six months it has to be filed. Discriminatory, discrimination claim with the EEOC must be filed within a year. So, we would have that year clearinghouse. And then basically, what we found on the record retention requirements as promulgated by the Secretary of State is when you strictly follow it, that in and of itself almost becomes, well, we destroyed it because that was what was recommended. You know, and when we've gotten some of the Sunshine Request Issues that have alleged different things, you know, it's almost been the defenseful, best defenseful position to say we destroyed it pursuant to the policy. So, I think we'd be outside of a claim for discriminatory practice, number one, and then number two, I think, which they would have to proceed if they wanted to file some type of civil rights violation claim. And then number two, I think, you know, we found that to be the best policy in practice to really follow, you know, those guidelines, you know, pretty much as strict as we can.
Make a motion, we approve the destroying of the records submitted to council. Motion's been made in second to approve the, destroy the records that we have listed. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item number eleven, Finance Manager, Gabriel.
Good evening. The only item I have is the financial report. You'll notice on the sales tax form that sales taxes overbudget about fifty-three thousand dollars through August. We reviewed the sales tax reports for restaurants and convenience stores for the second and third quarter of two thousand thirteen compared to the second and third quarter of two thousand fourteen. And the sales tax collected increased about thirty-seven thousand dollars, which equates to around two, about two million dollars of sales. Since there aren't, haven't been like an influx of people moving to our area or any big changes like that, we are attributing that to the tournaments. We had six tournaments that were held out at the athletic complex during that time period. There were also other stores that would've had increases in sales that could've been attributed to that as well. So, and then motor vehicle tax increased for those periods about thirteen thousand dollars.
Let's hope that trend continues.
Yes. It's all good.
That would make a great year.
Is there any other questions for?
We have fifteen tournaments scheduled for next year.
Do we have a wrap-up of these pool year? I know that, if you read the notes, we were behind in revenue for the two-year period. We were behind in expenses, but do we do a wrap-up of the whole year at some point in time? Does the Board see that?
We can certainly do that. I had a conversation with Chrissy from the management, the pool management company, actually, today and we'll be meeting in the next couple of weeks, so we can certainly get their thoughts. One of the things we're looking at is to see if the seven P.M. closing was really what we thought it would be. Gapstaff put together some numbers today and it appears to me, just from an average, that at, at six P.M., we were averaging twenty-four customers. The decision to be made from that will be, does twenty-four customers warrant keeping the pool open an additional two hours? So, that's part of what we need to discuss when we talk about the pool so we can plan for next year. So, we can certainly put a report together that kinda summarizes everything for that discussion. Terry, what would be interesting to me also then is how many additional parties did we end up having because we were closed earlier? Did that cause the number of parties to increase? Okay. We can pull all those things together as we start, because we need to start planning for, if we are going to close at seven, we need to know that. Or if we're going to continue on to eight or nine, we need to know that as we look at the contract renewal for next year. So, certainly we can do that.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, I get one comment, I know Mike was up here on the request for fireworks and I, I think the public needs to know when we passed the firewall, the tax for hotels, which was probably when you were on the Board, I imagine, it was quite a while ago. Since then, we've raised one point one million dollars from fees through hotel taxes that were collected specifically targeted for tourist development-type activities. So, that's been, I think, a very successful tax and opportunity to allow us to do different things.
Anything else? Item number twelve, Economic Development Director, Michelle.
Good evening. The only, the main thing I have for you this evening is approval of the S.T.P. funds the STP funds from Missouri Highway Department. These are funds that we'll be using to assist with Hickory Lake. And there's actually an ordinance on this, later this evening for that.
So, is this the drawdown of the money that was received because we did the house repairs?
No.
No.
This is funding that we get on a yearly basis from MODOT that has to be used for certain types of projects. And we have, I believe it's like five years that we can accumulate the funding for. And we've been accumulating the funding, so we're now going to draw the funding down to utilize to assist with Hickory Lake.
So, this has been sitting in the agents' budget every year, and it's in the line for capital. We just have to request the money. Is that right?
Well, it's not actually sitting in the budget. It accumulates at MODOT. It's roughly twenty thousand dollars a year. And you can draw it down each year if you would choose, if it were an eligible project. But since it's such a low amount each year, we typically have kept it. You have to use it at the five-year period. You can't combine it for any period longer than five years. So, it's time for us to draw it down.
So, it's sixty thousand roughly?
Ninety-six or ninety-eight thousand in total.
You need a motion?
There's an ordinance later. And then the only other thing I have for you is to remind you all that there is a ribbon-cutting open house at American Family Insurance, Thursday, October twenty-third, from three to seven PM, with the ribbon cutting at five. And I'll be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, Director of Operations, Terry.
The first item I have for you this evening is the renewal of the property insurance. Premium is increased about thirteen thousand dollars over last year, which is a result of several factors, not the least of which is that we've added about six hundred thousand dollars in property. The Willow Road property, we also increased our limit on the city hall structure of about four hundred and twenty-two thousand. And then the property limit at the pool increased to include a new vacuum as contents on that. So, all of that was really related to increases in properties that we've added. The automobile component increased a little over three thousand dollars. We had some older autos that went away. We had four new autos that now have comprehensive coverage, so full coverage on those, and the premium's significantly higher than when it's just liability. So, that was the auto component. The public officers and employment-related practices increased about twenty-six hundred dollars. If you remember, we increased our limits from a million dollars to two million per occurrence with a four million aggregate. So, thus, that increased. There was also some minor increase in that due to the claims that we've had, so that component actually had a percentage increase as well. And then general liability increased about thirty-nine hundred dollars. Operating expenses were up about a hundred thousand dollars in total, which is what drives the general liability, as well as a seven thousand dollar increase in payroll in the water department. We created the foreman position, if you remember, in our budget. So, there wasn't anything that was surprising here in the renewal. Total premium for this year would be a hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars.
I'm losing track of time. Two years ago, we bid this out?
Last year.
Last year. So, then this is the first renewal of this?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there any other questions or discussion?
I make a motion that we approve the Tri-County Agency renewal of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second to approve the renewal with Tri-County Agency for one hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Rule call, vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Probably a point for the public, John, is that the renewal is with the Missouri Rural Services, which is the underwriter of the package.
That's correct.
And Tri-County is the broker.
The broker, okay.
And then just a couple of operational updates for you. The circus was in town last week, even though it rained and rained and rained, and we thought we were going to need an ark before the circus happened. But the show went on. As I understand it, Alderman Schluter was the announcer for both of those, and I think did a good job.
Thank you.
From the report that I got. Even though it rained like a monsoon, and I was really worried about the numbers, we were actually up a hundred and forty-four over last year as far as tickets that were sold. Total tickets was one thousand and eighty-three. So, it was a successful circus in spite of mud and rain. So, it's a very popular event.
Does the city, the city make nothing off this, other than people are in town shopping and doing that? But they come in, and they're doing it for a fee, or just for the, what people pay to get in? I don't know how that works.
They, it's based on ticket sales. So, the expense that we have, we don't really make anything off of it.
Right.
Our expense is really for, we have to bring in trash dumpsters. We have to connect some water hoses. So, we have typically, expense to us is about two thousand dollars, all told. We do some advertising for it. But really, they, what they get is off of ticket sales. That's the bottom line. The other event that was held this last weekend was Hometown Halloween. Jessica had goodie bags and things that she had put together out on the city lawn. I think she said that the total, her estimate was two hundred and fifty, which is an increased amount over last year. She said she had two hundred goodie bags made, and they were gone in the first couple of hours. So, I think that event is growing. And she felt like it was a positive event, that we needed to continue to participate, and that it's done really by the Warrenson Downtown Association, and we just participate in the event. So, it sounds like it was very positive, and I think they had at least good weather for that event on Saturday afternoon, so.
They did a good job reaching out with the, like, on Facebook and what be it, this year. It was really well. I liked it. If you get all the information you needed, if you liked it on Facebook, it was really good.
That's great. And that's really all I have, unless you have some questions. Go, Mike.
May I present this to Gary real quick? This kind of gives you an idea of what we get. This is what, this was for the circus. This is an item, item. See, I'm trying to do my homework. That gives you an idea.
So, what's it say there?
Well, Michael explains in detail.
[laughing].
I mean, it says the total expenses, I assume this is paid for by the tourist commission.
Right.
Was fifty-four hundred dollars. The income was thirty-six hundred dollars, so it had that loss of a little under two thousand. And they thought they would subsidize it for two, so it came in.
So, yeah, that's what, that's what we tried to achieve.
That's all I have?
Okay. Item number fourteen, Public Works Director, Guy.
Good evening. First item I have is the monthly report. The sidewalks and patches done.
I've had a lot of people comment on how great the sidewalks look.
Yeah, they do look good.
Yeah, they did a good job, pretty good.
I don't appreciate it. Any questions on that?
Doesn't appear.
Next item I got is a positive. David Camarino started working for the street department in two thousand and eight, and he transferred over to the wastewater plant. There was an opening there in October fifteenth. And Dave went to a D and R class, a ten-day course, and took his wastewater license and passed it with a C license. So, Dave's worked his way up, too.
Sounds good.
Doing a good job.
Well, please pass along, Craig. Congratulations, though.
And then, next item I have is the smoke testing. On your, in front of you, you have what we plan on sending out on door hangers. Our goal is to advertise in the paper, which is, that's coming up. We're going to go, we're going to do that two to three weeks before we start smoke testing. A week before smoke testing, we got, we have ten signs made up. We're going to put them in the neighborhood, let them know that what we plan on doing. Forty-eight hours before, we're going to put the door hangers on the door, and then go door to door. And then twenty-four hours before we start smoke testing, we're also going to go door to door. And we'll put it on the website, and then we'll change the website as the area that we're going into.
How many, how big of an area do you plan on testing, the whole?
We'll probably do, I have ten signs. We'll probably try to do maybe five or six blocks at a time.
But the whole town?
Or how much?
No, just certain parts of town. I'm looking for gutter drains right now, and then creek crossings. So, we'll do some subdivisions, and then after the phone calls quit coming in, we'll, we'll go to the creek crossings, let the smoke clear, and then back up to the subdivision again.
Did you get that paper, Tim? He's going to wait till the smoke clears.
So, that's where we're at with that. Fred's coming up.
Is there any other questions for that? Fourteen D.
Approve the hire Travis Helston at twelve dollars an hour for public works, for maintenance and labor.
Make a motion, we hire Travis Helston at twelve dollars an hour as a maintenance and labor worker in the Public Works Department.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second to hire Travis Hud-
Helston.
Helston at twelve dollars an hour, maintenance and labor in the Public Works, Works Street Department. All, rule call, vote?
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes. Motion passed six to zero. Item fifteen, Chief of Police, Greg.
Good evening, all. The first thing I have is the September monthly report from the police department. I attribute the increase of numbers compared this year to last year in the lieutenant's pet project, and that is making sure that officers are stopping in schools on a regular basis. We pull a number every time we do a walk-through of a school, and they're doing that fairly regularly. So, that's, that's what's going on there. The other thing I wanted to point out was Detective Black did a great job investigating the Jonesburg Bank robbery, ultimately getting charges on a suspect. He definitely had a handicap, in that usually the two of them work together on a major crime. But in this case, Detective Weber was out on medical leave during that time, so he pretty much pulled the full load on that. He did a great job.
I agree.
Any questions about the monthly report?
Move on.
Item two is the computer software bid. The last time we talked, we did the hardware side of this, and I told you I would bring the software side. This, in fact, is the Missouri State contract provided by Worldwide Technology. This is two copies of server software plus the user-client access licenses to get us going with that new hardware. Ninety-two sixty-six fifty is the total, and actually leaves us a little over three thousand dollars under budget on the total project.
Any questions for him?
No, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for nine thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty cents for the user-client access license and server software from Worldwide Technologies.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Would you read that back?
To award the computer software bid to Worldwide Technology Incorporated, the amount of nine thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty cents, the state bid.
Rule call, vote?
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seventeen, Building Commissioner, zoning officer, Jack.
Where's Don Brad, sixteen A?
Oh.
Just give Brad.
I don't like Brad that much. Okay. We'll go to sixteen then. Maintenance and grounds director.
Good evening. I have my monthly report.
Any questions for Brad?
A little wet out there for the retaining wall, huh?
Yes, it's been extremely wet. But he's moving in Thursday, so we should have, should have it done in about five days. He's thinking, once it, if it stays like this, we should have no problems. His other job got, his subcontractor got messed up with some stuff with the rain, so that put him behind, which he was supposed to move in last week. So, and I talked to him today, and he said Thursday he will be on-site. They're finishing that job up, so we should be, you know, get started on that, so.
Okay. Item B.
Yes, requesting a, to bring back after some, at the beginning, when we were doing budgets at the time, the, last, the year before we had the drought, wasn't much going on, didn't have any tournaments, so we were kind of left out. And I thought we could get by without the full-time employee that we didn't hire back. And I'm requesting that we add that one back in with the addition of the, the fall, and we had fall ball that we have to take care of now, and the number of, increased number of tournaments that we're going to have. I just can't find time to get all my other projects done besides cutting grass, and it's, this year's been an exceptional year for grass cutting. We haven't slowed down a bit yet.
Spent too much time putting bows up.
We're still cutting, so. I think that we've, if you read the thing Terry and I kind of went over, we've, we found the money to, to hire the, another thirty-hour permanent part-time, plus we'd like to have the full-time person back, if it was possible.
So, you're asking for one full-time and one permanent part-time?
The permanent part-time, we, we've got that taken care of with our one that we have now. We did some switching of some hours. And then the, the permanent part-time is the one I would like, like to get back to help me with, get all my projects done.
Do we need a motion? Okay, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of our, to hire an additional grounds and maintenance worker.
Full-time.
Full-time.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second to approval to hire a full-time maintenance worker. Any other discussion? Rule call, vote?
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed six to zero. Now, can I, is there anything else, Brad?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Now, can I do seventeen?
I think you're safe.
Thank you. Zoning officer and building commissioner, Jack.
Good evening, everyone. First item I have is the monthly report.
Any questions?
Get those two new buildings.
Huh?
Two new houses?
Yes.
Picking up?
There'll be one next month, too.
So, we're up to four.
It's a building frenzy.
Is there any questions or discussion for Jack? Okay, move on.
Second I have, item I have is a summary of the fall cleanup event. There was a hundred and twenty-two residents participated. We disposed of a hundred and eighty-four automotive tires, twelve tractor tires. We received enough electronics to fill twenty-one pallets, approximately four foot by four foot by six foot tall. Mainly consisted of TVs and computer monitors. I wish hindsight, we would have counted all the TVs. It was a staggering number. As you already seen earlier tonight, we received and disposed of 3,666 pounds of recyclable metals and appliances, which gave us the ability to present a check to the Explorer Post for $338.55. We had two residents participate in taking items out to the city's yard waste disposal lot. We had the celebration over at Pavilion from 2:00 to 3:00. We had winners for the Weed Eater, was Joe Wackowski. The Leaf Blower was C. Cosgrove. One oak tree was Ryan Chaddick, and another oak tree was Clarice Beckemeyer. And during the event, we also gave out additional flyers for helping residents dispose of items that we weren't collecting that day. A lot of people seemed happy to receive that. We gave away T-shirts to the first 50 vehicles, and then additional T-shirts throughout the day. And during the celebration event, there was $15,000 budgeted for this event. My estimated cost that you approved at the 9/16 meeting was 5,000, and our actual cost was 31, $3,183.58. So we came out good. The unknown was for the tires. We were really sort of scared about that going into it, but it worked out good. And had a lot of positive feedback throughout the day. One thing to consider was for the local businesses, for allowing them to participate. They're not technically a city resident, but they're part of the city. And there was a couple of questions about that, how, how they could participate, or if we consider that in the future. And I'd like to thank Eric and John, helping me load tires all day.
They were nice and clean.
Yes, and wet.
There's great feedback on this, Jack.
There was. Good job.
I think everybody, our, the majority of people who came through the line was really thankful that we put this together.
Yeah.
And I think-
I think this is a definite plus.
As the work gets out, it probably, we'll probably have more participation the next time around.
Well, I'm wondering with, with the way it worked on the budget, so far under the budget, could we do something like this in the spring?
We have it planned for the spring.
We do, we're two. Oh, okay.
I believe the year, the year, the strategic plan, we're going to try to do it in the spring and the fall.
Great, great.
I know from my standpoint, Jack, I'd really like to see the, the businesses participate as well. They do bring property to our town, and it can't hurt, but more participation would be great.
And was this a question, you know, something to consider? And how do we determine, well, I'm, I'm bringing it from my boss-
Sure.
And they got a different address, you know, just sort of for clarification, or just simple letterhead that, you know, this person's my employee and participating. I mean, we'll make it as simple as possible. That, that might be an extra bonus.
Yeah, I'd really like to see you carry on with that.
I think that could be difficult, though, based on, if you open it up to businesses. I mean, I understand the need, but you could open up a wide range of, you know, increased stuff that we can't take from the residents if, if we have the business. It depends on the size of the businesses that want to bring us the stuff.
Or if we keep them in the limits of what we keep the residents in as well.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure before the, before the spring one, we would put together a packet and present it to you for your comments and concerns to address it. But that was just something I wanted to make sure you, you was aware of. If that was one item that came up a couple of times throughout the day, you know, how, how could they participate?
Jack, I was in another town later that afternoon that was doing the same exact thing, and they had their football team out, helping to get the stuff out of the vehicles as they came, and wrapping things up, and they were out with their football jerseys. And I thought it looked like a cool, pretty cool project. I'm not committing for our football team. But it might, whether, if we would get a sports team, you know, one of the teams that wants to come out and do some, some community service, and provide some additional labor for you.
Well, we, we had the explorers helping, and then we actually also had the community service workers helping us that day.
Okay.
Along with several city staff and aldermen.
Lots of, lots of city staff.
I will see Terry make some good hot cocoa.
I only interviewed it.
Is there anything else we could possibly move on to?
The last item I have is Property Maintenance Code Review Revision Committee. Part of this one-year action plan, I'm responsible to form a committee to review the existing property maintenance code. My goal is to have the committee consist of a minimum of two aldermen and our alderpersons, two planning and zoning commissioners, and two department heads. The committee will hold workshops and invite city residents for their input. The committee's proposed revisions will be presented to the board of aldermen for their review and approval. If you guys would like to think about that, and if I could get a minimum of two volunteers to help out on that, I would appreciate it.
When do you plan on meeting, during the day?
That's open to discussion.
Because I'll, I'll volunteer to work on it, but the meetings can't be during the day. For me.
Yeah, I would also work on it, but it can't be during the day.
I can, I can do either one, day. I, I would prefer day, but it's just me.
What, what times would, would you guys recommend that can't work during the day? Prior to a, to a board meeting, or on a separate night?
Doesn't matter.
After 5:00 o'clock.
Anytime after 5:00.
After 6:00 for me, it doesn't matter.
Saturday morning. Either way. Everybody loves that.
Really?
About 4:30? About 4:30 Saturday morning, so we still get our days towards that?
Well, if Terry brings hot cocoa.
I would be awakened up at 4:30. I'm sorry, we're going to bake cocoa.
They will knock your-
I think it's also something you need to consider. We, we want the input from the city residents, but we have a lot of city residents who have to work during the day. So if we want to include residents, we're going to have to consider those after-
Like 6:00 o'clock or later? It's fine.
But those same people don't like to give up their weekends neither.
I don't want to give up my Saturday morning.
Any other discussion on it? Looks like we're gone. Table it for now and let you-
Okay.
Come over with some stuff.
I will talk with the commissioners at our next meeting, and let you guys know when we'd like to do it, and do the final count. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, item number 18. Looks like bills to organize. Bill number 6114.
Call for a first reading of bill number 61-14.
Second.
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Holly, seconded by Alderman Dryer for the first reading of bill number 61-14. In ordinance approving a settlement agreement with CenturyLink.
Call for the second, final, and approval reading for bill number 61-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Holly for the second reading and passage of bill number 61-14. In ordinance approving a settlement agreement with CenturyLink.
Any discussion, questions? Rule call vote?
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Bill number 6214.
Call for the first reading of bill number 62-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Dryer for the first reading of bill number 62-14. In ordinance authorizing execution of an STP urban program agreement between Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the City of Warrington, Missouri for the Hickory Lake roadway improvement project.
Call for the second and final reading and passage of bill number 62-14.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Holly, seconded by Alderman Schluter for the second reading and passage of bill number 62-14. In ordinance authorizing execution of an STP urban program agreement between Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the City of Warrington, Missouri for the Hickory Lake roadway improvement project.
Rule call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Okay. On down to item number 19, Executive Session.
Make a motion that we move to Executive Session.
Second.
Motion by Alderman, Alderperson Kastlerly, seconded by Alderman Dryer to close the regular board meeting and to go into Executive Session for Real Estate.
Rule call vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion, uh, meeting and adjournment.